Give me the countdown. Good evening, everybody. We'll call the July 20th meeting of the Bristol, Tennessee Regional Planning Commission to Order. Roll call, which is going to be done by Margaret, please.
All right, Kelly Graham.
Here.
Maelyn Luttrell.
Here.
Joel Staten, not in yet. Jason Brewer.
Here.
Kevin Buck.
Here.
Takai Shu.
Here.
Scott Gaynor.
Here.
Mark Webb.
Here.
And Margaret Fire Robin, that's me, here. All right, thank you.
All right. Ms. Smith, if you would be so kind as to get us legal.
Certainly Chairman, as you all have heard before, the Governor has by executive order suspended certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act to allow governing bodies such as the Planning Commission to meet electronically in a format such as this. In order to do that, though, the governing body has to make a finding that it's necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak for you to meet electronically. At this point, it's appropriate for you to make that determination if you find that that is so, and I think a roll call vote would be best. Any discussion that you wish to have, you should have that. If you don't feel that it's appropriate to meet electronically in order to meet to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans, then this meeting should be adjourned until such time as you can meet in person.
Is there any discussion about what we're doing?
Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Hi there.
Okay, I am on the phone. I am on the phone.
Very good. Can everybody hear Joel?
Yes.
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 And Joel, are you ready to take the roll call stop or you want me to?
Yes, yes ma'am, I've got it right here.
All right, you're on.
Okay.
Okay.
What we're doing, if there's any discussion about why we were doing this electronically, if not, I'm going to ask everybody to vote on the necessity of this happening. If you're in favor of doing it, please vote yes. If you're against it, please say no. Joel, if you'd call that roll.
I will do that. Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Maelyn Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Jason Brewer.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Takai Shu.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Everyone is yes, sir.
Fantastic. Next item on the agenda is selection of officers. Is there a motion on that?
I'd like to make the motion that we leave officers the way they are, except for one change, and that would be the Assistant Secretary, and I'd like to nominate Jason Brewer for that.
All right.
Kevin.
Say it again, Kevin.
I would second that motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Roll call.
Okay, hang out just a minute. Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Maelyn Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Jason Brewer.
He dropped off.
Okay, Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Is that, is that a yes?
Yes, it is a yes.
Thank you. Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Takai Shu.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You've got the minutes of the June 15 meeting in front of you. Any changes, additions, or corrections? Hearing the motion. We have a motion.
Okay, who made the motion?
Howdy.
Maelyn.
Okay, Maelyn. Okay.
And the second is from?
Mark.
Okay.
Mark Webb.
Got that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Maelyn Luttrell.
Yes.
Maelyn. Joel Staten is yes. Jason Brewer.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Takai Shu.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify, Jason Brewer, are you on the call?
No.
So Jason didn't vote on that.
Right.
Yeah, I've got that under not participating.
Is Jason back?
No.
No, I thought I heard.
Me too.
Not a problem. Um, normally, right now, we would have unscheduled comments from the public. Mr. Biggers, as I understand, there's nobody at the annex to address this. That, that is unscheduled.
Correct, sir. There are no participants here for unscheduled comments to the public. We do have Mark Trivet here for the Sullivan County rezoning request, and then Chris Farin for the discussion of BZI ruling, although Mr. Farin has indicated he doesn't want to speak during the discussion portion. If it changes, we'll let you know.
Not a problem. Old business, Historic Preservation Awards Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as last meeting, we had discussed that y'all need to confirm some Historic Preservation Award Committee members. You did all those, but asked to add one of the previous winners of that award to the committee. With that, I'll let Sheriff Young lead the discussion.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So to follow up on last month's conversation about the Historic Preservation Award Committee members, you all filled in the slate that appears in the box on the screen, but the plan asked that we reach out to some previous award winners and see if they would have some interest in filling a previous award winner slot on the committee. We did reach out to all the who were previous award winners, and the people, the four names at the bottom of the screen are the folks that expressed some interest. So you have Susan McClellan, who was a winner in Fairmount in 2019, a citywide winner in 2018, Nidra Lee, who won in 2019 from the Holston Avenue District, and then also from the Holston Avenue neighborhood, Deborah Kennedy, actually 2018. And she expressed that, you know, I think she's got a lot going on, and so she would step up and fill in if there weren't anyone else that had interest. But she would be, you know, kind of there to fill the slot if no one else did. So this is the four names for individuals that are being on the committee and need to get some Planning Commission direction on that slot.
Do we have, is there a top number that we're trying to fill, or did we limit it or anything? So Sheriff is nodding her head no.
That, that, no is the answer. This committee was created by the Planning Commission, so this is your?
I would recommend we go for the three people who are willing to serve. That Deborah Kennedy would do it if nobody else would, but if those three others are willing to, I think that'd be awesome. Also, they're from different, the Fairmount and the Holston Avenue, and we might want to rotate somebody off at some point, so I think it'd be great if all three were willing to serve. That's my opinion.
Sheriff, I have a question for you. If you could kind of help me, along since I'm so new. I did some research on both those districts, and, you know, one thing that really caught my eye, I guess, and I don't know what the future of this classification will hold, whether or not it'll be of any bearing. But, you know, there are two, two locations in both, in one of the historical districts, which are identified under the Green Book classification, and I was wondering whether or not the city of Bristol would look at identifying those two locations with regards to the Historical Preservation Initiative.
I mean, we can certainly talk about that for sure. Are you talking about maybe like an award specifically, or?
Not necessarily. I'm more concerned of the representation with regards to those two sites. And I was wondering, in addition to Margaret Fire Robin's comment of the maximum number of committee members, whether or not to be the possibility of another individual that had in mind to be asked to serve on this particular committee.
Certainly up to the Planning Commission. Absolutely.
Yeah.
The individual, I think that I would like to nominate or recommend or reach out to serve in this particular capacity would be Gwen Ellis, but I don't, I'm not sure that she would be interested in this particular position or not.
And she's in the Fairmount neighborhood, right?
I believe so.
Yep.
Yes, she is on Georgia Avenue.
Gwen would be great if she's willing to serve.
Well, I would be happy to reach out. That's the direction of the commission.
And we don't have to, if you want us to reach out to her and bring this back next month, we can. There's no pressing timeframe on this. So it's totally up to the Planning Commission, your will, or if you want to appoint the three shown and then reach out and bring her back. If you all want to do that, that's up to you all.
Or I assume we could go for all four, and then if she doesn't agree, then we've got three.
Yeah, I always try to know if they're willing to serve before I put them on a board.
Mr. Chair.
Does anybody feel this is getting too big, or is that okay?
Well, yeah, I'm starting to wonder. I mean, we already have somebody from Fairmount. Are we talking about removing Susan Tanner and replacing her, or?
No, we also have somebody from Holston Avenue as well, so.
Yeah. I, I'm just trying to understand the drive to add, add this person. What, what, what's the, what's the impetus again? I, I wasn't, that wasn't clear to me.
For the, for the previous winners or for Gwen Ellis, or?
Gwen Ellis. Well, the previous winners, yeah, that I understood. You know, having, having one or two of them, that'd be good. But, but the, the drive for Gwen Ellis, I mean, to represent Fairmount, I mean, we already have somebody at Fairmount, so I'm, I'm trying to square that in my head.
Well, Scott, you know, my, my perspective is that, you know, when I was, again, super new to this committee, when I was doing research on this, you know, there, there are two sites which stuck out with me with regards to the Green Book. And I felt like, you know, maybe we should look at reaching out and trying to get a better grasp of diversity within our community.
Okay, so what, what does she bring to it? That's what I'm trying to understand. What, what, what's the diversity that she brings to this? I have no idea who she is, so.
She's a community liaison, a school board member, and a person of color.
Okay, so, I, I mean, what is, okay.
Yep, I think that'd be good.
What's everybody's desire? Which way you want to go?
I just, I just think we don't want this to get too big. That's what I think, but, you know, too big committees hardly get anything done efficiently, but.
I think we need to check with Gwen before we make any movements towards that.
Sure.
A moot point, or if, or if she is willing, then we can consider.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Yep, sounds good.
I'm okay.
So does that mean we're going to roll this to next month?
It does. Do we need to, do we need to bring that to a vote?
No, I don't.
Daniel?
I, I don't think you need to vote on that.
I'm not sure that you've got a motion or anything on the floor right now, unless.
No.
I don't think you need to vote to postpone it at this point.
Correct.
All right.
And Jay?
We'll just really hold off on this until next month, and we'll discuss some more then.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, we'll check with Gwen. We'll contact Gwen and see if she's willing to serve on the board.
We excellent. All right.
See Jason Brewer back.
Okay, the next item up under new business is Sullivan County rezoning request. And I also do want to, I want to make sure everybody realizes that we do have somebody in the annex that will probably be addressing this. So let's start off with a presentation from staff, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, up for consideration is a rezoning recommendation within the urban growth boundary from R1 to B3, location being 2382 Carolina Avenue. And the reason this is coming before the Planning Commission, because it is in the urban growth boundary, or urban growth boundary, and that does have Sullivan County zoning, but because it is in the urban growth boundary, we do make recommendations on zoning changes that Sullivan County wishes to make in the urban growth boundary. The applicant owner is Mr. Mark Trivet, and with that, I'll let Sheriff Young do the presentation to you all of this particular item. And Mr. Trivet is here, as you've mentioned, and we'll let him speak. If when time, you just let us know, and we'll take him back to the room to let him speak.
Thank you.
Tim, can I make the assumption that he is listening to the presentation?
Yes, sir, live.
All right.
Real time, I guess, is a better way to say it. So he is not a delay.
All right, who's going to make the presentation to us?
I, I've got this one, Mr. Chairman. As Tim stated, the rezoning request tonight is to rezone this parcel on Carolina Avenue from R1 to B3, and this is Sullivan County zoning, R1, B3. This is, the parcel is located in the city's urban growth boundary, so the reason that the Planning Commission is here for this request tonight is for that reason. Whatever your, your all's recommendation is, will then be forwarded to the Sullivan County Commission for decision. The address is 2382 Carolina Avenue. Tax map is tax 8, parcel 138. This on the screen is an aerial image and location map of the property on Carolina Avenue, there where Carolina Avenue meets Bristol Cavern Way, outlined in blue. This is a zoning map of the area. There is a parcel up Carolina Avenue from this one that is zone 83. Dominant surrounding zoning is either R1, A1, and that's again Sullivan County R1 and A1 zones. This chart shows the existing zoning and existing land use of the parcels that surround the subject parcel. So again, you have R1, A1 zoning, and the predominant land use is going to be single-family and mobile home use area. Here are a few photos of the site. Here's one more that shows the home and some landscape debris on the site. And the reason that this came to, I believe, the county's attention and then to, this was made is because there was a code complaint, and this is included in your materials, but there was a concern that there were landscape trucks and debris on the site, which prompted the solving zoning complaint sheet that's included in your. And I think at the time in which Sullivan County staff spoke with Mr. Trivet, he indicated his desire, request to rezone to B3 for the purpose of a storage lot. As it stands right now, a storage lot is not allowed in Sullivan County's R1s. So as we do with rezonings, we look at our future land use map. So the image on this shows the future land use map, the, the color indicated by the light yellow is low-density residential. The color indicated by the pink, which is at the top end of the map, is a commercial zone. So this area is solidly surrounded by a low-density residential classification on the city's future land use. We also look at the policies that are included with the future land use map, and policy two plan is to protect the character of residential neighborhoods. Upzoning this property from R1 to B3 would disagree with your land use plan and policy, and staff's concern is that it would spot zoning there on, on Carolina Avenue. So the recommendation to Planning Commission tonight is that, since the planned use of the subject parcel does not align with the low-density and residential character of surrounding properties or the city of Bristol's future land use plan, which projects low-density residential, rezoning this parcel to B3 would be a case of zoning, and the staff recommendation to the planning tonight is to send an unfavorable recommendation to the Sullivan County Commission for their consideration. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all.
All right, any questions that we have, Ms. Young, at this time?
Yeah, I, I've got a question. So, I, I mean, I guess what I'm kind of confused about is it, it just says that he basically parked the truck there, and that's the problem. I mean, I, I read their resolution. It doesn't say anything about parking a, a commercial vehicle. I mean, I, I guess somebody could park it in the street here at Bristol, right? I mean.
We, the staff, we just received the packet for the request. We don't weigh in on their code violations. We just wanted, that was part of what was included in the packet from Sullivan County to us.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering if you had more information about that.
Just what's in your packet's all we have.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Questions of staff?
What, what was to be stored there?
From our understanding, he's storing, and Mr. Trivet, I'm sure, might speak to this a little bit more in detail, but it's commercial for a landscaping business, and then and different items used in, in his landscaping business, and then there's storage of debris left over from jobs.
So there are, if you flip through your packet, Joel, there are pictures of the items that Sullivan County provided us that were on the property.
Yes.
But once again, we're not here to weigh in on their, their issue about that. We just have a request before us from the property owner to rezone to B3 from the R1 district and what their code violations are, property maintenance codes. That's not what we're here to weigh in on. Just the potential for the property owner to, you know, do we, are we favorable or unfavorable about those zoning requests, rezoning requests?
Would you guys be so kind as to amplify your thoughts of why that you have an unfavorable recommendation at the staff level, please?
So I think that when you look at the allowed uses in the county's R1 zone, residential zone allows single-family detached dwellings, it allows government offices, it allows libraries, museums, but it does not allow commercial use, heavy commercial use of properties. That's only allowed in their B3 zones. I think that perspective and given the fact that there's R1 zones around and all that property, that's, that's what the staff recommendation reflects in terms of residential zone. The actual uses, I mean, if you, if, I'm just going to read a quick little blurb here, but, you know, some of the uses that are in the B3 zone include automotive parking, automotive and marine craft sales and accessory services. You've got some office uses, you've got outdoor material and equipment, sales and repair. professional offices, restaurants, so much more, much more intense commercial uses in that B three zone.
And that was one of the reasons, Mr. Chairman, I mean, one, it's in a residential, single family residentially zoned area, there is a parcel near it that's zone B three, but it is in a resident, single family residentially zoned area. And also, our future land use map does show that as single family residential area. And third, we consider this a spot zoning because it is targeting out a, you have a sheet at the end of your packet, at the end of the very last sheet. And it, we considered it a spot zoning because it was targeting just a single parcel for rezoning that was specific to that one parcel. And that was the three main reasons right there. One, the residential character of the neighborhood. Two, the future land use plan, and three, we do consider this a spot.
Also, in that B three zone, I mean, if if and when rezoned, it would allow any of those uses in the B three zone. As we often talk with the rezonings in the city, you're looking at everything and everything that would be allowed in the B three zone would be if resoned.
Okay, are you all, is everybody on the planning commission happy with presentation? Are you ready to go to the Mr. Trivet?
Ross, if you could bring Mr.
I'd like to hear.
They are heading back to the computer where he can speak with you.
Mr. Trivet?
Yes.
If you would be so kind, give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Mark Trivet, and I live at four eleven Friendship Road, Bristol, Tennessee. But I own that property and my daughter lives in that house there, below it there. And what I do, I'm not in a landscaping business. I put up telephone lines, fiber optic lines, kind of here working for hosting electric now. And what I was using that for sometimes, when we get done one job, you know, we might be two or three days where we get to the next job, I would park trucks there till we, you know, go back, you know? I'm not wanting it for a storage lot. I'm not wanting it for a storage lot. I just wanted it for, like I said, if I get done for a job, you know, to the next job, you know, I might park a truck to there, you know, to, you know, to get, you know, to the next job.
Okay, have you, I want to make sure you heard our discussion before you got on.
Yes.
Okay. And you do know that the the recommendation from our staff to the Sullivan County Commission is to send it unfavorable now.
And I was going to tell you about the wood too. I burned wood at four eleven Friendship Road, Bristol, Tennessee. I had two loads of wood dropped off there and I was going to cut it up, just sort of it, you know, cured out a little bit and busted up and take it to four eleven Friendship Road, what, what that's.
Okay, the way it works is we will take a motion and take and then have a vote on whether or not to send a favorable or an unfavorable recommendation to the Sullivan County Commission. And all it is, is a recommendation.
Okay.
The Sullivan County Commission makes the final decision one way or the other. But they listen to what we have to say.
Right, that's what I figured. Yeah.
All right, is there anything else that you want to say? Is there any?
I just wanted, you know, that's all I'm more on the left one to tell you, I'm not in the landscaping business. And that's far with there, and that's the only wood that's been there since I've owned it, and I've owned it about five years now.
All right, are there any questions from the planning commission to Mr. Trivet? Hearing seen none. Mr. Trivet, thank you very much for appearing. Unusual circumstances.
You, is this going to be an unfavorable recommend, you know, or a favorable one y'all going to send, but?
We're, we're going, we're getting ready to open the floor up to motions. And until we have the motion and the vote, I do not know. So the floor is now open for a motion.
A motion to accept staff's recommendation on this issue.
We have a motion from Miss Fire Robin. Is there a second? Mr. Luttrell, did you make that second?
I think there was two of us.
Well, I was looking at you.
I did.
Okay, then what we will do is we're getting ready. The staff recommendation is to send an unfavorable recommendation. So if you vote yes, in a roll call situation, you're sending an unfavorable vote to the Sullivan County Commission. Is everybody aware then what we're doing? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Out of curiosity, how far from the present city limits is this piece of property?
Not that far, Tim. Oh, just. Tim, how far from the city limits is this piece of property?
Probably a thousand feet. Somewhere in that, it's just right off. You turn east on Bristol Caverns Highway off of highway four twenty-one.
I know where the property is, but I didn't know how close it was to the present city limit.
Yeah, it's probably within a thousand feet. I'm just guessing, but it's.
It's close.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel stating this, yes. Jason Boer.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Takashu.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Faces unanimously, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Trivet, like we said, that is merely a recommendation from us. It's now up to the planning or the city county commission, and they'll decide how to rezone or not rezone.
I'd like to save my two hundred and fifty bucks.
We understand. All right, the next thing up on the agenda is presentation. Now, where am I? Yes, on the historical, historical district design guidelines. Who's got it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, up next. We have Sheriff Young will do an introduction for you, but we do have, and in your packet, there was a the draft historical design guidelines that have been put together just for your all's consumption. This is not a votable, you know, we're not asking for a recommendation, just some feedback and input at this point. Anyway, with that, I'll let Sheriff take the presentation.
Thank you, Tim. So just, I'll just briefly remind everybody. Last summer, we were successful in obtaining a grant from the, it's a comes through the state historic preservation office. It's a grant called the Historic Preservation Fund, but we were successful in a competitive bid to obtain some grant funds through that project. And with our grant funds, we're able to hire Mr. Thomason to produce the historic district design guidelines that are included in your packet. Thomas is based in Nashville, Tennessee, and he has done an excellent job of putting these together. We've been slowed down, hit a bump a little bit with the obvious from the pandemic in terms of presenting them as scheduled. But he is with us tonight, just to give an overview on the project and to talk about some of the particulars. And I just have a couple of little images here, just to screenshot the project as he speaks. But anyway, he's done a wonderful job and we're excited to share these with planning commission tonight and then the city council. So. Bill?
Okay, well, good evening and thanks again for inviting me to speak with you all this evening. I've worked in Bristol really for the last twenty years. We have worked on national register nominations for the commercial historic district to get that listed as an official national register district, and have also worked on the Virginia side on the nominations for Solar Hill, Virginia Hill, Euclid Avenue, and the Bristol Warehouse Historic District. So fairly familiar with the the community. But we began this project back in the fall, and that involved coming to the city and doing a lot of field work and analysis in the Fairmount Avenue neighborhoods as well as the downtown historic district. We took over a hundred and fifty photographs in these areas, and we use those to provide illustrations and explain about building styles, building details that are tailored specifically to the community. So we worked on that in the fall. We had a public meeting in December where I introduced the project. We had a number of people who who attended. We had actually two meetings, one for the residential districts and then one for the commercial area. After the first of the year, we continue to work on the draft and put that into a draft form and sent that to you. I also came back another time and took additional photographs and just to add some additional information and some additional illustrations. So what you have now is a revised draft of the design guidelines. And again, these are voluntary in nature, what they represent are best practices that are used in historic districts across the country for design review by any historic preservation board or any historic preservation commission they might have. We write these to be consistent with national standards. And again, we've worked on probably fifty or sixty of these kinds of manuals over the last twenty to twenty-five years. So the way the manual is designed, it has sort of like a overview and then guidelines for each kind of design guideline element. We look at materials that are prevalent in these districts. We look at overall form and massing in site for recommendations for new construction, how to do additions that are very compatible with historic buildings. We look at energy conservation and best ways that you can save money on your energy bills. So there's a lot of different things that we took a look at and are included in the design guideline manual. From this point, we've also had the manual reviewed by the staff, the Tennessee Historical Commission. They're the state historic preservation office, and they're the ones who provided Bristol with the grant. So we have received a lot of input on the design guidelines to this point. I think from this time, we'll be looking at posting this on the the city's website and getting some additional comments. And then we'll move into placing the guidelines into final form. So that's where we are in the progress of the the guidelines and be happy to answer any any questions y'all might have.
All right, do we have any questions?
Mr. Thompson, I noticed in the packet, we we had several pictures from the Virginia side that represented the correct way of doing things. Was that, was that from your advice on the Virginia side and your work over there?
Over on the Virginia side, most of those rehabs over there were done following standards so they could get the twenty percent federal tax credit as well as the tax credit that the state has. Tennessee is one of the few states in the country that does not have a historic preservation credit for your state taxes. So that's why, one of the reasons why you have so much more activity on the Virginia side of State Street than you do on the Tennessee side, just because they're able to do the economics over on that side a little bit more favorable than on the Tennessee side. But those rehabs were done following guidelines that are that are consistent with what we prepared. But those were done in a way where they worked with the Virginia State Historic Preservation Office to make sure that their rehabilitation was in keeping with the guidelines so they could get those tax credit.
Okay, great.
Which, just to add to that, last year, I feel like we got a little closer to perhaps getting some historic tax credits in our state, but I don't know that we gained that from this year for the legislative session. So a problem is how to fund those tax credits, but I think some different organizations made some really good proposals on how to do that. But that's something we need to all advocate for. It does make a big difference in a lot of communities, but particularly in ours where we have half of our downtown in in Virginia as well as half of our residential, older residential is split between the two. But I wanted to just say, looking through it, which it's a lot to look at, and I'll have to admit that I started looking at pictures a little bit more about half to two thirds of the way through, but I am just so, Kevin, stop laughing. So first off, a lot of work been done, so kudos to you for getting the work done, but also just pretty pleased to see how many things we have in our community. The examples almost, you used very few examples that were not in our own community. And I think the only non-positive example was parking lots. Everything else was pointing to the positive things we've done in our community. So I think it's something for us to be proud of, something that we want to definitely continue to preserve in every way we can. So I'm just excited that we have this grant that that we have you working on this grant. I think that's significant in the history you have. I know you helped way back when with Jerry Goodpasture's work with contributing buildings. And I know we probably need to relook at those because we've probably added some to that list. So anyway, I just want to say appreciation to you and also just pretty excited about the different examples we have. And because we cover, I think, a broader range of history than some communities do, like Abington and Jonesboro that are pretty narrow, that that's also pretty exciting for for folks to be able to study our community, look at it, et cetera, and appreciate the different features. So that's, just want to say thank you very much and how excited I am to see this work. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Phil, I've got. Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, this year, we were making pretty good progress, we thought, on the state tax credit. But then the virus showed up and everybody went home. So we'll try again, hopefully next year.
And it might be something we follow, and I don't know if planning commissions take positions or whatever, but if they do, it might be something we want to look at for next year's legislative session and say, hey, we see this happening right in our community and we support it as well. So anyway.
When you're talking tax credit, you talking for the commercial or residential or both, I mean?
In Virginia, they have a tax credit for the rehabilitation of commercial buildings and the rehabilitation of private residences. What we are proposing in Tennessee is, on the state level, is a tax. What we are proposing in Tennessee is on the state level is a tax credit. That would be for commercial properties to tie in with the federal tax credit. Which is also only for income producing properties.
Okay, thanks.
Phil, I recently worked with somebody on the Virginia side. And it was a commercial building and they had used, well, I've got to assume it was the Virginia tax credits. And it was kind of like a two edged sword. Yes, they enjoyed the the tax credits, but they really, really felt like their hands were tied on what they could do and could not do. And they weren't as enamored, they almost think it wasn't worth the amount of tax credits they got. Because the it was so tough on them to meet what the requirements were. Can you address that? Is that where we would be going if we end up with tax credits?
No, I don't believe so. I think, you know, when you run into those kind of issues, it's pretty rare. I mean, because I've consulted on, I don't know, 100 buildings or so, going through the tax certification process. And there are some buildings that I will talk with the property owners and just say, look, what you're trying to do. On this building is not going to going to meet the guidelines, so just do what you want to do with the building. But it's a trade off in that, you know, you're being rewarded with the tax credit. For keeping the historic and architectural character of the building. But I would say that's whoever was doing that on the Virginia side and that building. That's that's unusual. Most of the time, these projects go very well and property owners are pretty satisfied with with the outcome.
The specific example where they were trying to change out the windows and they were not allowed to change out the windows. Is that normal?
It can be if the windows are original and they are restorable. So it just depends building by building.
Okay.
And I think if, I mean, I don't know how many times it's been used in our Bristol, Virginia. If it weren't to an advantage, it wouldn't be used. So I think.
And for example, the steel windows in the in the rehab of the the building there on on Shelby. That, you know, you guys gave the award to last year. And I consulted on, I mean, those windows were replaced and they came back in with new steel windows. Because they were not considered to be in a restorable condition. So it just varies from building to building.
All right, now this is not anything actionable tonight, but do we have any other questions, Phil?
No, Mr. Chairman, what, you know, what we would ask is that there is a deadline, September 30th, that we have to complete the guidelines. We would ask in the upcoming weeks before the next planning commission meeting that. You get any comments, anything you see as you read through this to share so that we can look at that. And Phil and Sheriff can work together on incorporating those comments. COVID, as far as public participation, is sort of throwing a curve ball at us. We will try in the upcoming month, you know, August to see how we can get public participation in this document. Other than just posting it on the website. It will be presented at council, I think, tentatively at the August work session for their discussion. And Phil will be back online with them if they choose to do electronic meeting at that time. So I said, in general, what we need is any feedback, sort of like you did the comprehensive plan. You have the initial rollout to you of the guidelines, please look them over. Give us all the feedback you can give us so we can look at it and dig through it because it is a big document, so we'd appreciate that.
Is it appropriate for like our historical association to ask for a presentation?
We can get, we're looking at options we have right now on some other input. So we just haven't, you know, it's recent, COVID's ramped back up in this area, we haven't made any hard decisions yet on that.
Well, I think the historical association could be interested in a good group to. Of course, be favorable for the most part, but would be interested in seeing what the work that's been done.
Certainly, that's certainly, we'll have several groups to.
I can, I I don't know if you want feedback now, but I think it's, I I definitely want to give you mine. Because it's significant. You know, the the commercial end of it, I I don't have too much heartburn with design standards and things like that. But the entire residential half, I, there's no way I can support that. We're talking very large chunks of this city. And to put a blanket over it and say that you have to use a certain window, you can't replace the roof. Unless it's a, you know, the original type of roof, a metal stamped metal or whatever it may be. The the colors are dictated in here. I mean, we went through design standards for the commercial districts. And those are exactly the things we said we would not support. And yet here we are putting them on on the residential part of the city. I I just, I I I mentioned this in the last meeting and that those are the things I'm afraid of. And and now that I look at it, this is what I see and I, there's no way I can support that. I think it's just too onerous for for homeowners.
God, it's guidelines, nothing is required.
Well, I mean, it says the guidelines will be considered for formal adoption and pass an ordinance to protect these districts with his historic zoning overlays. So I I mean, that's in the, that's in the cover letter. So I mean, this is moving towards the force of of an ordinance, yes. I I mean, I I don't, I I'm, I'm really at a loss here. Again, I've seen these things move through in neighborhoods and, you know, all of a sudden, the people that weren't technically historical homes. I mean, these big, beautiful mansions, they're under the same same guidelines because their house was quote old. I I'm, you know, I mean, we we establish guidelines and then, you know, it's part of our ordinance. And that's what we did for the business districts. And and so I don't see how this is any different.
Again, these are voluntary guidelines that we have. And the only way that they are placed over in terms of an overlay is by the desires of the 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 neighbors. By the people who live there. So that's a separate process of going through and deciding, do we want to have any kind of overlay? That would be following these guidelines. And so that's going to be up to the the people who live in these neighborhoods. And if typically, it depends on if you have a majority supporter or if you don't. So it depends. But these guidelines, they're a tool to use for property owners in the future. If indeed, there is that desire to move into having an overlay Historic District.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I I concur with Mr. Gainer's comments. And, you know, when you get into language as it pertains to zoning ordinance, specifically. Sections of zoning ordinance that mention purpose and applicability. Or general descriptions that are are subjective or ambiguous. And then you leave it up to the residents of of a section of of the city to interpret that. I think it's very, very problematic. And I would also say that anything that comes out of this should be supportive. And I would, I would support that aspect of it, but I would not be supportive of of restricting unreasonably. What someone can or cannot do with the property they own. And again, unreasonable being the the term that I would use. And and I guess that's where we need to define what is reasonable and what is unreasonable. But telling somebody what specific kind of window they have to put in the the home that they just bought that may be dilapidated or or vacant. Maybe even burned out to the point to where it's cost prohibitive for them to develop a piece of property beyond its current state is is definitely not a goal of mine.
What are the comments?
Mr. Chairman, the way I am understanding this, and please correct me, if if we were to say affirm this document. We neither the planning commission nor our regulations nor even the public would be constrained by them. Except at their own whim. Is that true?
That is the way I understand it.
Yes, we're not asking for to have zoning regulations here. We just have some guidelines being developed that we want everybody's input to get a final document on the guidelines. That is all at this time.
And the purpose of guidelines would be just as a public service?
Yes, it's just an opportunity for people to look at those guidelines. And if they choose to, you know, they might give them some ideas on how if they are interested in restoring their home or preserving the historic character of their home. But it is not an enforceable document until such time as the city council would change the zoning ordinance to have historic overlays or require historic design standards.
So we live in a 1918 house that is not on anybody's register. We've lived here 38 years. I I wish we had had these guidelines because we did replace our windows. And had we had guidelines that were suggested, then we might have made another decision. And also a few other things that I would have really appreciated having. So that's what I see this as is, these are some of the things we'd like to see and encourage people to consider them when they do their remodeling or whatever, so.
As has been expressed by other folks, I'm very concerned that this takes us close to going down the path of. Okay, now that we have these thoughts and designs and guidelines, let's go ahead and make it an overlay district. And all it takes is a vote to to take it. And I would, I would want city council to tell us that in good faith, no, that's not where they're going with this. Otherwise, I would do these guidelines in the way we're looking at them with much more, much more detail. And because I would be concerned about that.
So what's the experience with different commu, how many communities have guidelines? That have existed as guidelines for years without becoming official ordinances or whatever? That's for Mr. Thompson.
Well, across the country, there's about 2,600 cities, communities that have some type of historic overlay. Now, I would, I would recommend that, you know, typically, these kind of discussions take about a year. If anybody in the neighborhood of Fairmount or Holston Avenue want to pursue this. That requires a lot of public meetings and a lot of discussion to really see. Are there areas that people feel there should be overlay of the the historic overlay? That would then follow the guidelines. It may not be a large area, it could be a large area. But you only go through this sort of process to see if you have enough public support. And if you don't, it doesn't get enacted. So I've been involved in a couple of different neighborhoods here in Nashville. I have, I live in a neighborhood conservation zone. And, you know, we have several dozen of these zones just because we feel that, you know, protects our property values and keeps inappropriate development out and, you know, helps us market our area as a Historic District. So again, but that took us, you know, a year, year and a half to go through the process of the discussion and public meetings. And making sure that we had overwhelming support, that we could then go to our city council and say, this is what we want. And please, you know, protect our neighborhood. So it's a long process and it's not going to happen, these sort of things just take time and it takes a lot of discussion. And that's what I would encourage if there's anyone in these neighborhoods who really want to go in that direction.
May I add one more little point, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go please, go right ahead.
Well, I I was just going to say back to the kind of start of this project. A couple of times that that this is way scalable to, on one hand, it's just a guidebook that we can give out to residents and they can look at it if they want to and they can. Want to, to all the way to the model of like Williamsburg where down to the type, you know, everything is defined. But the point of starting with this set of design guidelines is if there is conversation to talk about historic zoning. And keep in mind, it could be maybe Holston Avenue likes it, Fairmount hates it, downtown hates it, maybe it's another way around. But we have something to look at, something to start from, that's just voluntary. Going out to the community and talking about historic zoning or design guidelines without something in my hand to show the community. So this gives us just something, something Bristol specific and Bristol, the the research. Put together that we could start with a conversation, trying to go out and talk in, as somebody said, you know. About documents that don't even exist. We we would have a, we have a document that exists. Ever become a reality. And I'm certainly not suggesting that it is, I'm just saying if and when. Because I just hate the thought of not being able to show what you're talking about. Or especially if you got to the point where anybody was actually going to consider it, not be able to show what you're talking about. So that's one of the benefits of of going ahead and getting the document, not in any way, shape or form adopted. But just something we can have as a tangible item to talk about.
Yeah, I agree with Sheriff on that point that you got to have something that people can, you know, see, look, taste, feel. When you're having these conversations, but and like others, I mean, it's it's a thing that, yeah, you you don't want to try to force this on anyone. But if you do have a community that would like to adopt it by their will. Then it gets something to to look at and to work work towards.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment about the will of the neighborhood here. I mean, in almost all these historic districts, especially one like Fairmount. You have a handful of large, old historic homes. And then you have a very, a very large number of not so historic. And these things, in my experience, tend to get pushed by a handful of people with lots of resources. And then it affects a broader community. I mean, if you look at the Fairmount District, it is a huge cross section of different types of of housing, of different house stock. High, medium density, low density duplexes, these large ones. And in fact, I mean, we have another item on our docket here to talk about. Which I can see exactly how these guidelines would be used as a cudgel to prevent what somebody just doesn't like in their neighborhood from happening. And I I mean, when you dictate what color tones you should have, what types of gutters you should be having, what kind of windows you should be putting in. I mean, this is onerous on the average homeowner in any regular neighborhood. I I agree, if somebody wants to do it, that's fine. But, you know, they can research on their house and understand what what it was in that period. You don't need the the force of the city to to enforce that. And and again, I said this the other day, I see this as a small minority of people trying to use the city to enact what they think that is they like in good taste. And and, you know, I mean, honestly, we're not here to protect an individual homeowner's house values. We're here to do what's best for the city and that's that, I'm just going to leave it at that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I suggested anything about, you know, the city trying to enact on this. You know, if you look at a district, say the Fairmount community, I mean, all those homes have an owner. Yeah, some people rent, you know, some of them's got apartments, you know, set up for those type homes that's there. But but every house has an owner, so it would be up to the owners of those properties to make that decision if it even got to that point. And I don't think it could be just a handful of owners in that in that whole community make that decision if everyone's involved.
Okay. Question, where do we go from here?
Once again, what we would ask the planning commission to do is to look through them, you know, look and give us any comments you have on them. You know, if you see typographical errors, formatting errors, or want to see some different input in there. Typographical errors, formatting errors, or want to see some different input in there. Uh, that's what we're looking for at this point from everybody so that we can finalize the documents. Before September thirty first or thirtieth, whatever the date was on there. Uh, because that's when the grant uh expires and we have to have the guidelines completed by then. And uh, once again, we'll be going to city council work session tentatively in August to have a similar discussion, but. This is not a adoptable item, something we want you, you know, asking you to adopt. Uh, it's just the guidelines. It's a, you know, just something to give people at this point. So that if they do want to do, do want to restore their homes. Uh, somewhat historically, they can use it as a guideline in those areas, you know, that's just a document we have. Ultimately, if planning commission and city council and the community want to take it a step further, they can. That's up to those. Uh, individuals and those governing bodies to make those recommendations, but these are truly as intended or a starting point. For those areas that people, not even just those area, other areas could use them if they have historic structures. Structures like Margaret said, Tennessee Hills might have some, her home or others that they could uh. Use similar guidelines to look at their structures. And say, hey, you know, this might be of interest to us because we just like the character of our home, so. But this is not, like I said, we're not looking for an actionable item. We're just looking for input and thought so that we can finalize the document at this point.
It is, is it ever going to be an action item in front of us?
We do not. I don't think it's like the comprehensive plan and Danielle, wherever Danielle is. I think this is just. Uh, go, go ahead.
Just to. If these were to become uh, you know, based on the way that I've read the statute, the historic zoning statute, if these were actually to become binding on a particular neighborhood. I'm not sure that planning commission would really have a great deal of involvement because city council would create another board, a zoning, a historic zoning commission that would. Um, that would recommend guidelines for those neighborhoods and adopt them and city council would, would designate historic. Districts um. So I think that. I think there's a real difference between these, this document as. Guidance and this document is binding. This document is a long way from being a binding document that would actually. Um, control what someone chooses to do when they renovate their house. It, it would, it's going to, as, as I think the presenter said, it's going to go through. A number of steps before it becomes that binding document.
Scott. Scott, if I may, uh, just if it's any assurance or reassurance for you, uh, knowing our council. That there would be members on that that have the exact same concerns that you mentioned. And uh, there'll, there'll be a lot of discussion on it. So, uh, yeah.
Well, I think we're going to create, I, I mean, if nothing else, change the title of it. Because we have design guidelines, right, for the business districts? And, you know, I, I, I mean, that. To me, we're not that far down the road. I mean, it, it, all the, all the, all the city council has to do is say, all right, we're going to set up a historic overlay and that's that. I, I mean. This looks like it's, it's step one in a process that's being laid out. And anyway, I give you my thoughts on it. Um, and, and again, that, you know, we have design guidelines that are binding and as people see this, they will. Rightly or wrongly, be, think that these are going to be binding as well.
All right. What other comments or discussion at this point in time?
Just uh, really appreciate uh, Mr. Thomason to uh, for putting. The drafts together and working with us and the community on the guidelines and look forward to uh finishing them off in the upcoming months, especially during this uh. Covid uh, that has thrown a curveball on a lot of work and process.
We do. Uh, we thank you very much for your input on this and all of this work. This, this obviously is a ton of work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. Thank you.
All right. Tim, is there anything else that we need to discuss on this?
No, sir. Like I said, just get us any comments over the upcoming weeks to us so we can uh. Look at them and try to incorporate anything that you have into the final document.
All right, we will move on before we get to other matters. Mr. Brewer. You were not here at the very, very beginning. If you would, time is to introduce yourself to everybody and tell us who you are, etc.
Uh, I'm Dave Brewer. Uh, lived in the city of Bristol for a little over fifteen years now and. I'm the administrative elections here in Sullivan County. Obviously a busy time for me and I appreciate your. Bearing with me at the beginning of the meeting as a result of some finishing things we had to do for the third day of early voting today. Um. I'm also the uh. Chairman of the Sullivan County uh Ethics Committee. Uh, I have served on a homeowners association board in my past and so I. Understand restrictions uh quite thoroughly and have applied those in some cases as a member of the board. And so I bring that. Experience and I'm very analytical and I look forward to working with each one of you guys and uh. Learning more about planning and zoning as, as I plow through. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, city council update, please, sir.
Yeah, it's just an update from the city council meeting on July seventh. Uh. They did adopt the comprehensive plan by resolution, so it was a final document and I think, I'm pretty sure Sheriff reminded me, but we did give you that final bound document in your packet. So don't let it gather dust on the shelf now. Everybody uh, look at that and try to uh. Let's keep each other honest and hold each other accountable for what's in that document. So. Uh, let's get that thing looked at and keep it on our minds. Also, first reading, city council passed the land use plan, the future land use plan, revised future land use plan. And the commercial design standards. They will have second reading and public hearing on August fourth for those uh, two items. So that is the city council update.
Thank you so much. You all had an interesting meeting last week that you're going to talk to us about.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh. We just brought this item to you tonight. It was a last minute addition because border zoning appeals met on July sixteenth. To hear an administrative appeal on a structure being located at eight oh three Pennsylvania Avenue. And the administrative appeal was from the neighborhood. They're the ones that appealed the placement of that structure. That it did not meet the intent of our zoning regulations. Uh, with that, I will turn a presentation over to Ms. Young and she can. Step you through what was presented and the findings of the. Border zoning appeals and the reason we bring this to you tonight, as you're listening to this. Is because with staff, we feel that potentially there needs to be some further clarification of the RE district. Regulations. I think Sheriff emailed that excerpt from you all earlier today from that section, so uh. It, with that, I'll let Ms. Young give a presentation and then we'll talk a little further and then try to get some feedback from your all's all uh. Ideas on the RE district.
Also, before she gets started, I want to point out that Joel is a member of the border zoning appeals. Uh, while I don't think it's a, a city ordinance. Uh, it's been kind of accustomed through the years that there is a common memory between the planning commission and the border zoning appeals. It's. Been that way more than it has not been that way. So maybe later on, Joel can jump in here also.
Oh, trust me, I will.
All right, Sheriff.
So I, I'm going to walk through a couple of the slides uh, that we put together and shared with the border zoning appeals to. Um, illustrate the situation here at eight oh three Pennsylvania. Um, so this first slide shows the map and. Most of you been up and down Pennsylvania Avenue lately, but um, the, the parcel question um sits between Cypress Street and Pine Street on the eight hundred block of Pennsylvania. So it's outlined here in red. Here's an excerpt of the zoning map for this area. So the uh, yellow is your RE zone. So that's most. Neighborhood is owned already. Um, you have R two on the blocks to the south. And you have a little bit of um, R three in the Fairmount neighborhood as well. So, um. We received, uh, development services received a permit. The structure that's there at eight oh three Pennsylvania uh, back in April. So it was very end of April and the request was to place a forty eight by twenty eight manufactured home on the property at eight oh three Pennsylvania Avenue. Um, staff reviewed it, um, both planning staff and the building uh. Staff and the permit was issued on May thirteenth, twenty twenty. So the image on the screen shows the um, site plan, plot plan, um, diagram that was submitted along with the permit application. And you can see the lot, the lot is pretty typical of that Fairmount area where it's fifty, about fifty by a hundred and fifty. So it's a narrow. Um, a long, narrow lot. Um, the building as placed um. On, on this plot plan showed that the structure would meet the setback requirements which are defined in the RE. Um, ordinance and that is, and I'll get to this in a little bit more detail um, in just a second, but. The RE district allows averaging. So each block has a defined average setback. For this eight hundred block of Pennsylvania, that's twenty five feet. The side yard setback all across Fairmount is five feet. And the rear yard setback required all across RE or. The RE district is probably how I should say, is thirty feet. So the structure as shown on the um, permit application was about fifty two feet from the front property line. Um, forty two feet from the rear and it met the five foot side setback. So um, staff reviewed the application and again, approved it in May of twenty twenty. So I'm going to show a couple photos of this um, site and these photos were taken last day. So this is the front. So I'm standing in Pennsylvania Avenue right here taking this picture. This is the back. So this is in the alley looking back towards Pennsylvania. This is the side that faces south. And this is the other side that faces um, north. So you can see as of last Wednesday, they were um, in the process of laying the um, perimeter foundation for this structure. Here uh, is just like a, a block view of the um, area. So you can see eight oh three uh, here behind the White House on the corner. So this is looking um. Towards the Virginia Avenue Food City. This is looking in the other direction back towards downtown. This is on the opposite block. So this is looking at the Tennessee Avenue um, sign back towards um. Back away from town. And this is looking at that same block in the other direction. So just to give you a flavor of um, that area. So, um. In the appeal we received, there were four items listed and I must just briefly go over these four items um, as far as what the um. What the appellant thought were um. Remedies for some of the problems that she saw or the violations that she saw. So there are four of these and then there are three specific violations that we um, addressed with the border zoning appeals. And that they made their ruling on. So um, here are, and I won't, I know it's probably not fun to have these read to you, but basically they um. She first said that, that, that the property owner should be required to move the structure in order to comply with the zoning ordinance setback requirements for the RE district. Um, if that cannot be done with compliance, the structure should be removed from the lot. The second was to require the property owner to reorient the structure on the lot to comply with the RE uh, district. And again, if that cannot be done, to uh, have the structure removed from the lot. Number three is required that the planning commission um, review the project for additional zoning ordinances that might be in violation. And in parentheses, you see setbacks, porch or step construction, etc. Once number one and number two have been enforced. To ensure that new construction complies with existing patterns and character of the neighborhood. And in a manner consistent with the existing neighborhood. And then four um, essentially says to recommend that the appropriate entity review the entire process. By which they receive the permits um, without requiring uh adherence to the zoning ordinance. So I'll go on. Um, here are the three specific violations outlined in the application. So one deals with the front yard setback and I'm going to go through each one of these with a couple. Photos or maps to, to kind of lay out how the. Staff review of these uh, worked out, but one is that the front yard setback is not in compliance with the RE district regarding front yard setbacks. Number two. That the structure does not face the same direction as the majority of the residential front facades as required. And number three is that the main entrance door is not in the front facade of the structure. Let's go through each one of these um, as we looked at them um. Our staff here looked at them. So um, the language here in uh, italics is lifted from that RE district section. So it talks about. Setbacks and it says that new homes and additions will have front and side yard setbacks that will place the structures on the lot to match. The neighborhood's streetscape and setback pattern, which may differ widely block by block. Talks about front yard setbacks as the average front yard setback of the lots within the same block and on the same side of the street. Talks about side yard setbacks shall be five feet and then the rear yard setback is thirty feet. So the map uh, on the right side of the screen, this is an excerpt from a map that was created in two thousand thirteen. To um memorialize and diagram the average setback on each block. Um, in both the Fairmount area and the RE area of the Fairmount neighborhood. And the RE area in the Windsor Avenue Anderson Street area. There, there's a RE district um, over there as well. So the entire RE districts are mapped like this. Staff went out at that time and measured um. Each block to get the average setback um, and then put it on this map so we can refer to this now. Um, and this is important because. How the ordinance was originally set up in two thousand nine allowed averaging of properties within three hundred feet. Now, I did not work here at that time, but in looking at the file, what seemed to be problematic is. If you tell me to go out and measure uh, the setback and you tell Tim to go out and measure the setback and you tell Kevin to go out and measure the setback. It can be difficult to catch the same measurement every single time with different people doing the measuring. Um, also it created a bit of a slowdown when people would submit building permit applications. So staff was running out to measure and um. And creating an additional um. In if inefficiency when it came to submitting uh, and reviewing the building permit. So the staff at the. Two thousand thirteen update to the RE district said, we're going to create average setbacks per block. We're going to do it for the front. We're going to do it for the side and then the rear yard setback is going to stay there. So when. A person calls or comes to us and says, what is my setback? Um, we give them by this block. Um, you know, if you're on the eight hundred block. Um, it's either going to be seventeen feet or twenty five feet, depending on which side of the street you're on. Uh, if you're on the seven hundred block, it's going to be twenty or it's going to be seventeen. Uh, but, and that's based on averaging those setbacks that are existing for those historic homes. So. Staff um. Consistently interprets the setback line um, as the closest point at which a structure can be built. Um, all zones in the city have uh setbacks defined except for the B two and B two E district. If you remember when we worked on B two E so much. Um, we talked then about how we should, we would allow the buildings to come up to the street because buildings were built on the street there. However, we did not mandate that they be built at the street. Um, we just allowed them to come up to the street if. That's the desire of the, the builder developer. So we have consistently said and, and um, practiced that all buildings. Within zones must be constructed at or behind the setback line, but. But there is no mandate for construction to occur at that point. And to our knowledge, uh, current staff, there's been no known examples of this practice occurring in the city. Um. In the planning world, um. This is, this concept is more commonly referred to as a build to line or a build to requirement, so. If you say, and you would probably define build to line in your ordinance, um, if you say that build to line, you're required to build at twenty-five feet, that's. That's the more typical way to phrase that rather than to call it your, your setback line. So this diagram, uh, illustrates how we consider these, um, setback and, you know, as you all look at site plans and. Um, different things, this is how we typically interpret that, so we always interpret that setback line. So it's gonna define the building envelope, um, so you can build within this defined area, but you don't have to build at those lines. Um, in our zoning ordinance, we get to the point of defining, uh, what the front yard or the, the setback means. Uh, in the definition section and those definitions are at the, um, right side of the screen, so. A minimum setback is a distance of a structure from a property line. Required to obtain the minimum front, side or rear yards as required by the ordinance. Um, if you look down at the bottom of the screen, the definition of yard front. Uh, provides that it's an open unoccupied space on the same lot as the principal building extending the full width of the lot. And situated between the front lot line and the nearest part of the principal building or structure. So this is our consistent interpretation and practice of, um, setbacks in the city. So again, I said I did not work here at the time when, which the RE districts were created, but we of course went back through. Um, the file to look for any kind of clue as to, uh, what was the consideration of a build to concept at the time. Um, and this is the only thing that I was able to find, so this is just an, this is a note in the file. Where, um, the staff at the time had a meeting out in the Anderson neighborhood area. This is not, it was not in Fairmount, it was in the Anderson Street area, but they basically asked the, the people in, in, um. Attending the meeting, what they thought about new housing and structures and their height, size, placement, so forth. So the first bullet says the residents also mentioned that diversity of setbacks and building styles was important to maintain the character of the neighborhood. They noted that some houses were set much further back and while many were placed. Along similar front yard lines, it was variety that made the neighborhood, they said that they would not want to have all the structures. Aligned at the same position in the, um, along the front yards. So this to me makes me think that they had this, uh, as a idea or a thought asked the neighborhood about, but. Um, if it, you know, it. If it were, if what was the desire to have it that way, there would have been some more, um, there would be more concise language describing. Mandatory building lines, mandatory, um, build to lines versus just using the term setbacks, which is used all over the city. So, uh, violation number two and number three are, are really related, it talks about residential orientation pattern, so. Uh, the violation suggested is that the structure does not face the same direction as the majority of the residential front facades. As required in the zoning laws, uh, in her work governing the RE district, so. Um, this, this section talks about facing the same way, facing the same direction. And again, our zoning ordinance does not, um, define terms like, like orientation. Um, there is a measurable here with this six A section, uh, that talks about having a main entrance door on the front facade of the structure. So that is, um, an item that staff did check and, um, a front entrance door and I'll show you in just a second, but. Uh, that is showing on, uh, both the building plans and then, um, the photos from the field. Uh, show that as of last Wednesday that there was a front door, uh, front entrance door on that front facade. So I'm gonna talk just a little bit more, this is the, um. This is a, a map that shows the building footprints in this area along Pennsylvania Avenue. Um, I went in and measured the just core structure here on each of those. And you can see there's, um, some variety, um, in, in size, uh, on that block and some. Variety in terms of some structures a little bit square and some a little bit more rectangular, but the predominant, um. Construction in that area is a longer narrower house just because they're longer narrower lots. So the, the structure there at the corner of Cypress and, uh, Pennsylvania, which is just to the north of eight oh three Pennsylvania. Is about forty-seven by thirty-two excluding the front porch. The building form there at eight oh three Pennsylvania is forty-eight by twenty-eight, so they're very, um, similar in, um. Their form as far as how they, they sit on that lot. Um, but again, without any kind of, um, stronger definition of orientation or what's meant by face the same direction. Um. Where, we look to the front door, main entrance door as the, um, definable feature to, to characterize. Um. The orientation pattern, the, or the zoning ordinance doesn't give any, anything as far as saying. The structure can't be, um, set at a forty-five degree angle on the property, it doesn't say that you also have to have a porch on your front facade. All it gives us is the main entrance door on the front facade of the structure. So that leads us to number three and the, uh, violation suggested here is that the, um. That the door is not in the front facade of the structure, um, which is required by the zoning ordinance, but you can see on this diagram. Um, that was submitted with the building permit application that they, they did intend and did, um, place a front door. Um, on the front of that eight oh three Pennsylvania, they also intended to, um, construct a covered front porch. On the structure, but of course they, they didn't get that far along in the construction of the, um, structure there to, um. To, to get to the front porch, so right now, uh, or as of last week, you just saw that front door in, in the structure. So as Mr. Beaver stated, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals did meet last Thursday, July sixteenth, and they found that the following violations do exist. And this is a summary, um, or staff summary of what they decided, but. Number one is that the front yard setback is not a setback line, but a build to line, thus the structure is not in compliance with the RE zoning district. Um, they decided that the front facade was a ta- established at the time the structure was manufactured. Thus the structure does not face the same direction as the majority of the residential front facades as required. So, um, their, uh, interpretation is that the, the front was, um. Defined when the, when the, uh, structure was manufactured and would, in this sense, be on the south. Facing elevation of that structure. And then finally, number, um, three, the main entrance door is not in the front facade of the structure, so the BZA discussion and, um. Decision was that the main entrance door does not, um, meet that requirement that it, it is to be in the front facade of the structure. So those are the, um, kind of the points, the facts of this matter and like Mr. Beaver said, our, um. Desire and, and, and goal tonight is just to talk with you all about it and to, to discuss what and if. Uh, clarification is needed in the zoning ordinance, um, now and in the future.
And I think, uh, if y'all have that, uh, saw in the opening, the purpose and applicability in an RE. District, it talks about the purpose of the established residential neighborhood district. Is to provide specific lot development standards based on the existing patterns and character of single family and single family. Duplex neighborhoods which were developed prior to nineteen fifty. This will make existing homes compliant with the zoning ordinance. And will promote new construction and additions to existing residences in a manner consistent with the existing neighborhood. So that is the opening statement to the RE district. Now what staff and we do not have, we have no definitions of character, pattern, orientation. Things like that, so what we have to do is go down and look under that district and try to, uh. Make calls about the setbacks, was that a build to line or is it a setback line and looking at the history of it? The, uh, BZA obviously felt that was a build to line and not a setback line, that was what they felt based on the regulations. Uh, it was a split vote three-two on that to, uh, say that was a build to line instead of a setback line. And then the other thing, as you see, when we talked and Sheriff mentioned it about. That it has to have the front facade, has to have a main entrance door in that, uh, building. Now what BZA, uh, ruled and it was split four-one vote on. The facade is that because this structure was manufactured and installed at another location. At the time of manufacturing, the front facade was established, uh, with the main entrance. And so basically they said by moving it to this location, it didn't matter if you put a door in the facade facing the street. That that front facade was already established and as Sheriff mentioned. And Sheriff, can you flip back to the pictures between the, uh, side, that south view of the home, please, man? She'll flip that, flip back there, but this is the front facade as it was situated, this used to be the Respa Care Building. Out on West State Street, uh, but this was the front facing West State when it was at that location. And that is the, uh, door that was located in that facade out at that location. Now, you can see also, so the door, the wood door on the left. Is, uh, what was installed and that is the face of the structure as oriented. Now on Pennsylvania Avenue, so that door and that facade is facing Pennsylvania Avenue, that wooden door. But the BZA said that because it was manufactured with a main entrance and front door. Uh, and front facade, which like I said, it's that long view there that you're looking at. Uh, that it could not be relooked, you know, that was already established, so unless it was oriented with that facing the street. Then it could not be putting this location in the RE district, so. That was what they ruled and we just staff, what we're really asking you all is, and we can go line by line on them, but. One, if you're comfortable with how the regulations are currently written, uh, then that's one opportunity here. Or number two, we do feel as a minimum to get further clarification as to the intent. Of the Planning Commission, obviously any changes to the regulation would have to go through city council because it is the zoning ordinance, but. Is, if you do think the intent was a build to line. Then we would like to change it and say it's a must build at or build to line for the structure. Or if you feel otherwise, you know, we can make it clear what the intent, your all's intent was and obviously once again. Council has to weigh in at the end because it is the zoning ordinance. So like I said, one, do you feel comfortable with how the, the. Regulations are written clearly right now, uh, number two. If there are changes that we'd like to see to clarify those, what would be the intent of planning commission, the interest of. A build to line versus a setback line and then the whole issue of clarifying what the front facade of a structure. And the main entrance is, so. With that, Mr. Chairman, we will try to answer and you might, like I said, let Joel weigh in here since he is on the BZA. And was at the meeting, obviously, uh, might get his, uh. Input on the votes and the way they voted and why he voted a certain way, so, uh, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you're muted, you're muted.
Is anybody there?
He's still muted, Joel.
You what?
Uh, Kelly's muted and trying to turn his mute off.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, Joel, since you were there, why don't you give us some input, uh, as to, you just go with it.
Okay, the, the first big problem was setback versus bill two. And you know how I am with wording in a thing, Kelly, if it's wrong, we need to change it, but. Everybody, not everybody, three of them excluding me, uh, thought that was a bill to line. But that is not what it states and staff did an excellent job, now I've gotta say this, of trying to tell everybody what. A setback line was about you can't go closer than that line to the street, not you cannot, you know, you have to build to that line. But, you know, some people didn't, um, you know, didn't agree with that because the way the houses are lined up through there. So, you know, I, I did ask about a porch in the facade and stuff and he was going to put a, you know, a porch and a, and a overhanging stuff on it. Now, the, the second thing is the, uh, the front door. It goes, and I think he said it goes into, I know he's there, it goes into an eleven by eleven room. Now, it was brought up by a couple of the members that, and the attorney, that. That you couldn't re, you know, move a front door. And I brought up the point that you could, under general engineering practices and general construction practices. You could front door wherever you want it. And, you know, I, I was told I was wrong, but, uh. So it went on from there and, you know, there, there are ways that, and thi- this is my personal opinion. That some of these things could be worked around or we need to change some of the wordage.
If I could clarify, the attorney that Mr. Staten is referring to is the applicant's attorney?
Yes, thank you.
Is city attorney, just so that everybody.
Yes, it was not Danielle, it was the applicant's attorney.
And, and also, let, let's put, make sure we understand, the people that were appealing this was the neighborhood. Because what. The, what you had was a, the city staff said, here's the way we interpret everything, you may go forward. And they were not violating anything per se, given what they were told, however. Then the neighborhood appealed, appealed the decision of city staff and said, no, we don't think so, and then that's. They appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a ruling.
That is correct.
I got a question?
Yes.
Hold on. Um, so how, how does a quote neighborhood appeal? I mean, it was a single person, right?
Um, Mr. Gaynor, yes, a single person filed the appeal. Uh, one of the residents of the neighborhood, I think she's on the same block as the property in question.
Actually, she lives a block over, right? Seven hundred block of Kentucky, that was what it said.
Well, in the, in the general vicinity, the way that the, um. The, uh, statute reads, really anybody who's, who's aggrieved by a decision of zoning official can file that kind of. Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, when Mr. Staten was talking about the neighborhood, there was a, a pretty large turnout and there was a lot of comment from people who live in the area.
There, there was no question, girl. Had the right to make that appeal.
Sorry, Kelly, I, I heard like every third word, could you just repeat that?
There is no question then in the mind of city staff. That the person that filed the appeal did have standing and had the right to make this appeal in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, I think this person had standing to, to appeal the decision.
I, I have a clarification, the, the, the reference to neighborhood, do they have an association that. Acts democratically, uh, together as a, basically a homeowners association or some other equivalent, did they vote as a neighborhood or? And if not, was the, the people present for the BZA meeting unanimous in their opposition to. Or actually in support of the appeal that was filed by the, the, uh, the person who filed the appeal?
You wanted to get that? Oh, you wanna get it?
Right, it's, there's, as far as I know, there is not a formal organization, uh, there's a formal neighborhood association. Uh, and the people were not unanimous, I think there were a couple of comments that were, um. Not in favor of the appeal.
That's why I understood it also.
Mr. Chairman, I am, uh, I'm new. Uh, I don't hesitate to jump into something, and I'll just provide my thoughts. I've, I don't know the, uh, the owner, the landowner, and I don't know the applicant, to best of my knowledge. Um, so I don't really have a side here personally. I, I will say that I respect anybody who tries to, uh, hold up the aesthetics, uh, of a neighborhood and the curb appeal, enhance the curb appeal. And I think Bristol needs more of that, and I think, uh, we should encourage that. Uh, however, when you bring in the restrictive side of government, that, that's where I have some concerns and issues. And so to answer the questions that Mr. Beavers proposed, and before I do that, preface my remarks in saying, based on my understanding and reading of, of the zoning ordinance and the, and the, and the memorandum that was issued by staff, um, I don't see any conflict with the way that the ordinance is written now and what the developer is attempting to do. And if I could just take a moment to explain that, um, number one, a facade is, is defined in our ordinance, uh, as the side of a building below the eaves. And so I would suggest that perhaps if we're going to look at that, uh, in relation to this issue or any other, that we consider what the front is. And then when you look at the reference of what front is for setbacks, uh, and open an unoccupied space on the same lot as the principal building, extending the full width of the lot and situated between the front lot line and the nearest part of the principal building or structure. So I think that's one, one specific section we needed to look at is if there needs to be clarification on that, um, in, in the definitions. And then the, the second thing is, uh, the setback versus the set two. You know, when I read this and I see the setback, uh, the setback standards under the RE district are defined as front, side and, and rear, which is, is pretty commonplace. And I even went to some surrounding cities to see if they had references in any of their zoning ordinances, uh, that, that listed or referenced or referred to a set two rather than a setback. And I, I didn't find any, but all three, front, side and rear are, are in the same definition. So if you look at the applicant's, uh, choice of, of locating his property in that envelope as, was mentioned by Ms. Young, um, actually, he could go back, I think his property is sitting now at, um, uh, forty, or the, the, the home is set at, uh, forty-two, but it looks like he could go back to sixty-five, uh, and still, uh, not be in violation of the rear setback. And so if, if, if it was a set two, I would argue that, uh, well, all, all the properties need to be set to the sides, and that's five feet, and to the rear at thirty, and, and the front at twenty-five, because all the houses on this block, from my review, and I drove by there, seem to be set pretty much in a row, but that's not true throughout the entire Fairmount District, just this particular block. So I have a problem with using an averaging, because if this, uh, dwelling was set at, uh, its maximum based on a setback understanding of sixty-five feet, and then you averaged another lot that was going to be built at some point in the future, uh, then you've all of a sudden created a forty-five foot setback. And, and so, uh, moving forward, I would, I would welcome discussion from staff and other members of the planning commission that have more experience of, than I do, of, of, maybe becoming more, and obviously there's been a problem with the way this has been defined in the past, uh, because of the change, I think in two thousand thirteen that occurred, uh, using the averaging. So the averaging seems to be problematic to me. And then the other thing that is a concern, and it's the last thing that I'll mention at this point, is the purpose and applicability, uh, section of the zoning ordinance. And, you know, I look at things from a plain meaning standpoint, uh, and I have to interpret and apply law on a daily basis, uh, on a pretty wide scale. And, and you, you have to look at what the words are that are written on the page. And that, that, uh, purpose and applicability is very vague and very ambiguous. And I noted that, uh, Ms. Young noted that in her memorandum as well. And so I think that's something that the planning commission should look at because, uh, existing patterns and character throughout an entire historical district or zoning, uh, map. I don't think you can get three or four people, or even maybe two people, to agree on that, on that term. And then the last thing in that section of purpose and applicability is, uh, new construction in additions to existing residences in a manner consistent with the existing neighborhood. Uh, again, very ambiguous, very, um, subjective. And I think anytime you can take subjectivity and ambiguity, ambiguity out of, of, of a written, uh, code, uh, you should. So those will be my comments as the new member of, of this planning commission.
Well, one, one thing I'd like to throw in there about the setbacks and stuff, if they were a build to line, what do you do if your house isn't going to be that big? Because, you know, you're not going to take up all that area if it's going to be a build to line. So that, that was one of the, the, well, that was one of the biggest problems. And then the other problem was, was the, uh, the little overhang on the, the objection was the little overhang on the original, and I'm not saying it, it is the front door, I'm saying the original front door, which could be taken off according to the, the person putting the structure in.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question of staff, um, on page two of the memorandum, there's a reference to the state, uh, statute, TCA thirteen, twenty-four, two oh one and two oh two. Is, is there a standing from, or, or perhaps the city attorney? Uh, it, it, it references solely because the dwelling is partially or completely constructed in a manufacturing facility. So how does that apply to a manufactured home that is moved, a double wide manufactured home that is moved from one lot to the next? In terms of, was this individual who's developing this lot or putting this, this manufactured home on this lot, where does that partially and completely constructed fall in, in line as far as any improvements or alterations that he would make? Uh, and, and, and how, how can we stay within the boundaries of, of that state statute?
Thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure that I understand your question fully, but the state statute, uh, as, as I read it, it is, I think the, the little case law that's out there on this statute, um, reads it, what the statute is saying is that you cannot, uh, exclude manufactured housing solely because it is manufactured housing. Um, and so whatever requirements you have as to, um, porches, front doors, I, I think they have to be able to apply to a manufactured house in roughly the same way that they would apply to a, to a stick built house. And I don't think that there's a distinction between a manufactured house brought off the truck from a factory and put on a lot, and one that comes from a different part of town.
I guess what I'm, uh, uh, to be more, clarify my question, could a home, a manufactured home that comes off of the lot or the, the factory, uh, where it's built, uh, be altered and be considered partial based on the alteration?
Um, you mean, well, sure, it could be, but I guess that, that the state law would still consider it to be a protected structure from, from the standpoint of that statute.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think that the way that it's worded is wholly or partially built, and I don't have it right in front of me, but I think that, that just because you add a porch to it, doesn't mean that it's no longer entitled to protection of that statute. But I will also say that the, the status of the home as a manufactured home wasn't a legal issue. Um, the applicant and her attorney conceded that this is, that you can't prohibit the manufactured home from, yeah, solely based on the fact that it's a manufactured home.
Yeah, well, I, I can tell you, there's a, uh, there's a neighborhood social media website, and at the beginning of it, you know, the, the, I saw a thread that came through, you know, on my feed about three weeks ago, and it was all about a double wide, a double wide, a double wide, doesn't belong here. So, I, I mean, uh, look, uh, that, that's where this came from. Again, I look at this as the, the, I, I look at the historical stuff, and, and it was basically, people didn't like the way it looked. When, and if you look at the actual, uh, the file that they submitted, you know, it was, it was half, it wasn't even stitched together, uh, you know, I, I mean, that, that's what it was about. Uh, it was about the looks, it was about the appearance. Um, I, I think we do need to tighten it up. I think we need to make it clear that it's a minimum setback, um, because otherwise every building in there, I guarantee is out of compliance because they are not exactly twenty-five feet, um, or whatever it may be. Uh, how, how anybody can understand a minimum su- setback as, as a build to line is, I, I don't understand that, so, so we should clarify that. Um, you know, I mean, a front door is a front door, and, you know, I, I've, I've seen buildings get re, rejiggered and they put a do- a door on the side where that's their new main entrance, but, you know. Uh, so I, I think we need to tighten up, uh, the, uh, the language, um, and, and, and make it clear, but I'm in support of the, I'm in support of staff's recommendations and their conclusions. I, I think we need to tighten up our language to reflect that so that we don't have this in the, in the future.
Mr. Luttrell, got, got two questions. This particular building, when it was originally manufactured, I think they had like a title or a tag or something for them. Was this manufactured as an office or was it manufactured as a residential building? And number two is, uh, with the placement of this particular type door and the width of it, has there been any consideration of any potential structural integrity with this type of change?
Well, the, uh, manufacturer, I can't answer the first one specifically about if that tag calls it out as commercial or residential.
I mean, they do make them as, as an office versus a residential as well.
Um, I know this was placed out as Respa Care, and I think there were pictures in your packet that had some superior shot that was used as an office. It's looked similar to an office use, but I would have to, uh, we don't have any of the, uh, building permit data from back then, that they don't have to submit floor plans to us. We just look for the tag that it has been produced as a manufactured structure. Um, the, uh, you can, there is nothing in our ordinances that building codes that prohibit, prohibit alterations to manufactured homes or stick built homes. I mean, we don't distinguish between the two, so as long as it meets building code, and that would be both structurally and size for ingress egress, then, uh, that can be done. So it would have to, any modifications to the structure, our building code department would have to look at those and approve those alterations, internal, external alterations to this structure, be it a manufactured home or a stick built home. I think, uh, we do not distinguish, once again, someone could stick build this exact same look of a home at that site. We don't distinguish between the manufactured and stick built, other than if it is a manufactured home, you do have to have the appropriate approvals from the state for that, uh, use to bring that, you know, to place that in the state of Tennessee. Uh, one thing also to consider, you know, to think about, and why we suggest tightening up the regulations, because there is a lot of ambiguous, ambiguous language in that first section, is that, uh, you know, character, all the, the existing neighborhood patterns, as mentioned by, uh, several people, is currently our regulations do not have design standards, aesthetic design standard, architectural design standards for residential structures. The only thing we have for residential structures is in the RE zone, that the main entrance has to be in the front facade in those districts. That is the only design standard for the look of a residential structure in the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And that doesn't even say what it has to look like, it just says the main entrance. Doesn't dictate what a main entrance looks like, what a main entrance opens into, uh, it doesn't have any of those standards in our zoning ordinance. And that's why staff would suggest that either way, planning commission feels, we would suggest some clarification so that there's not the ambiguous language in the ordinance, and that it is easier for staff to interpret those. Uh, and then one thing, and Sheriff, and it's in your packet, but what was happening in these districts, uh, they were zoned R three originally because of the lot densities, I mean, small size of the lot. So they looked at those lot sizes originally, and they were zoned R three unless you started getting multifamily and single family neighborhoods. Staff looked at the R, and another thing that was occurring, if somebody did come in and build a new structure, it had an automatically, you had to set back the front at thirty-five feet. Uh, I believe it was thirty-five feet, Sheriff, wasn't it? The front yard setback originally, uh, is either thirty or thirty-five, but it was forcing people to set their structures further back by us calling, you know, hey, this is a setback line, so you can't come closer to the street. What they tried to do, the intent, our understanding was to average the setbacks of the existing structures and to allow a less of a front yard setback. So if people chose to set their structure closer to the street, they wouldn't be getting a waiver, a variance from, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals to do that. So that is in general, in the nutshell, our understanding of reading through the packets there. Some of you all probably, I don't know if you all were on the planning commission at that time and can give us further insight on that.
Mr. Beavers, would it be appropriate, and Mr. Chairman, either one, showing my inexperience, uh, to hear from the communities affected by the, the, this zoning, uh, not just Fairmount, but others, on what their wishes are? Because obviously this is a set aside special district, and by no means do I want to impose arbitrarily my will or my opinion on what their zoning ordinances should say. I would be open, if there is an opportunity, to hearing from, from those neighborhoods and those, those owners, what they want and what their recommendations would be in addition to staff.
I think we're in a situation, we need to be very careful about how we go forward on this. Um, first question I've got about this is what precedent did this set? And is it only to the RE neighborhood that this ruling applies, precedent applies? And then, once we establish that, then I think I have to look at, um, this zoning, and I think we need staff to make recommendations to us on how to tighten the language up, and then we will discuss any recommendations.
Well, I think, and Danielle can speak to this, uh, here in a second, but, uh, I think the BZI, what they ruled was specific to the RE zone. And what they ruled, my interpretation is that it is not a setback line, the front is not a setback line, but a must build at line, build to, set to, whatever phraseology you want to use, but any structure placed in that zone now on a vacant lot must build at that front yard line. Uh, the second part, I think, and Danielle, here's where I need you to really clarify to me, well, I mean, the, the board is that if they manufactured structure and it is manufactured with a main entrance in a certain location, then that establishes the front facade regardless of how it's oriented or, uh, modified when it gets on a different lot. Danielle?
Um, and, uh, just to back up a little bit, the Board of Zoning Appeals, when they make a decision, technically their decision is limited to the particular application in front of them. However, if tomorrow staff gets an application from somebody who's constructing a, a house on a vacant lot in the RE district, or indeed in any district in the city, then staff needs to think about what that word setback means. Because certainly, staff in the RE district cannot, at this point, say that it's creating a building envelope. Um, it's arguably the BZA's decision, creating a build to line. So that creates some uncertainty for staff and how to handle applications. And while the Board of Zoning Appeals talked about the purpose behind the RE district, um, you know, that it's difficult to say whether they would have the same interpretation with a similar problem arising in another district. Um, if this is confusing, or if this is something that is open to interpretation by the Board of Zoning Appeals in the RE district, why wouldn't it, it could possibly be open to interpretation in another district as well. Um, with respect to orientation, it's a little easier because my, my understanding is that the orientation really only applies in the RE district. It's not a term that's necessarily used in other districts, and Tim and Sheriff will correct me if... And Tim and Sheriff will correct me if I'm wrong. And so there, uh, that it's less, it has less of an impact potentially citywide. Um, but still, unless planning commission is okay with that interpretation, then you would want. I mean, if you think that the board of zoning appeals got it right, then, and you don't need to make any changes and staff would can, would apply that interpretation going forward to a similar situation.
Counselor, let me ask you a question. Why is the front setback considered in this interpretation? The build to line, there are four setbacks on that particular piece of property. Why would you not say that all four of them have to be met as build to lines?
Well, I will answer that by saying that, um, you know, I didn't, that's the board of zoning appeals interpretation. And so they were faced with the question of whether there was a violation on the front yard setback. So I don't know that their interpretation would necessarily stretch to all the other setbacks, but having said that, it may be that, that that's the, the next case that comes along, that's how they look at it. If, if it's the right case in the right neighborhood, um, you know, there's not a, there's not a written opinion, like a legal opinion, that's going to come out of the board of zoning appeals that people can refer to. So in that respect, it's not precedential, but I do think that the board of zoning appeals is, is charged with trying to treat people equally when they're in similar situations. And I, I think that it would be arbitrary for them to decide one way on this lot and then in a similarly situated lot in a similar district, decide another way.
Is there an appeal process for the board of zoning appeals decision? And if so, would it be advisable for us to wait on that, uh, to see if that occurs?
Um, there is an appeal process. The statute that creates the board of zoning appeals, uh, you know, there's, there's an appeal from the decision of all boards and committees through the transitory court or even through another court, if you'd like to go there, but it's, it's going to be through the court system. And my experience with BZA appeals so far has been that they can stretch out for quite a while. Like we're talking three or four years.
And we're not here trying to overturn the BZA's decision. We just, we need to, we, staff feels like we need to clarify the regulations to whatever council and planning commission feels applicable if they feel what the board of zoning appeals rule is applicable and that was the intent, we need to clarify them to make those for people. There's not a question in the future. If we feel otherwise, you all feel otherwise, we need to clarify and change the regulations to state otherwise, so that in the future, that there's not this question coming up again. So we're trying to take the ambiguous language out of the RE zone, some of that ambiguity, ambiguity, I'll get it out. But it's getting late in the evening, but, uh, so that's why we're bringing it to you all this one. So we can get y'all's thoughts on what you believe is appropriate so that we can start crafting or trying to tighten up regulation. Cause if y'all feel the board is, you know, the first question is, do you feel the board is owning appeals? Is, is a build to line or a setback line? What's your opinion on that? I mean, that's one first question to start off with, uh, and get your feelings on that. So we can start crafting language. Certainly, you know, the board, if you all chose, you know, we can solicit public comment if that's your will. I mean, we'll leave that up to you on that, but that, uh, ultimately, if you do, a, a regulation is changed or adopted, there will be public hearing at the city council meeting to hear some of the comments at that time also. And then typically, planning commission, it's not an advertised public hearing, but you all hear from the public prior to any regulation changes. You all extended that courtesy to the public. So. But, uh, what we're just looking for is guidance from staff so that we can, you know, if you feel the language is fine the way it is, then we move on. And that's how we, what board of zoning appeals rule, that's how we will apply the regulations at, uh, from here on out until such time as if it is overturned by the court system. But currently that's the ruling. We have to proceed forward with that ruling. So.
I think what I'm hearing you say is help us with some guidance, help us with language that's in the, the current zoning. And, um, what did we really mean when we wrote this? And how did we really want it interpreted, uh, by you guys when somebody does come in front of you? How far off am I?
That is it. I mean, we just feel the language needs to be strengthened so that there's not, uh, that it is very clear that whether, like I said, the first one being, is it a setback line or a build to line? And that would to me is the simplest one, because I mean, that's, when you get into front facade and establishing the front facade, we would like to clarify that further instead of, you know, it's hard when you look at the definition of a main entrance, it usually refers to the front door. If you look at the definition of front door, it usually refers to the main entrance. And it's typically says it's the door facing the street. I mean, there's not much more than that that we found in looking at the Cambridge Webster. You just pick your dictionary. It's very difficult. And, uh, so we're just looking, like I said, we want clarification one way or the other. We're not pushing one way or the other on this. Staff just needs to make sure that, uh, if you're comfortable with the way the regs are written currently, that, uh, we'll leave it as is. If you want change, you know, obviously we need to start crafting on what the majority of y'all feel like is needed as far as change or, uh, to clarify it further. So that's where we are on the regulation. You know, obviously we're going to follow the BZA's will. I mean, that's what they want. And, uh, there's nothing wrong with following what they want. It's just trying to, for future uses, uh, whoever sets the positions and you all, future you alls and BZA members to, we do believe as a minimum to strengthen the language some one way or the other to clarify the issues.
Counselor, if you were giving us advice on how to go forward with this, what would you be asking from the legal perspective of what you want us to do, what you want staff to do and what you want us to do?
Uh, well, I think that this, this appeal was useful in identifying a couple of places in the zoning ordinance where you need better definitions. Um, if indeed you, your intent is that in a particular district, the front setback should be a build to line, then we need to add a definition of build to line. If that's not your intent, then that needs to be clarified as well. So I think that what I would be asking right now, what, I, I don't think, you don't make any decisions on this tonight. And I think this should be an agenda item for thorough discussion at your next meeting where you can actually start to craft the regulations that you've got. Our goal was to give you a, 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 an update on what the board of zoning appeals did so that you could have the on your minds. And if you'd like for us to go ahead and start, uh, or for Sheriff to go ahead and start crafting language or looking at other ordinances to see what they have, that's, that's fine. And maybe the right thing to do is to come up with a couple of different options going each way. Um, or this becomes a further discussion item at, at your next meet.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think I would suggest it that, you know, tonight, we just wanted to introduce the material to you all. And that at the next meeting, we can, much like we have with the design standards or the sign regulations, start looking at your all's feelings on the ordinance and how you all, what the majority of y'all feel needs to be crafted, how the ordinance needs to be crafted. If at all, most of you, I mean, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you may come back and say, well, we feel it's fine the way it's written. So. Uh, but it's, like I said, just trying to introduce this material to you tonight to get you all thinking, do your homework. Like I said, always your homework assignments to read that really good, the RE, uh, if you want to come in and sit down and talk with us, we're more, more, more call, uh, and talk with us and discuss it, you know, we're, and we'll provide any materials we can think of to everybody that, uh, you may wish to have. And, you know, we'll start digging into what other cities have around here. I know Jason said he had looked at some of that. Check that, Jason. Uh, but, uh, we'll start looking at other cities' regulations, like we'd much do anytime we look at regulations and seeing what the other cities, what they say in their ordinances. So. But once again, we feel like, at least for the time being in an RE zone, that that is a build to, set to, build at line. And then what, then once again, we feel like for a similar type structure, that we would have to, uh, follow BZA's ruling about the way it was manufactured. When it was, well, before it's placed on the lot establishes the front facade. So.
For those of you that were there, and I guess there's four of us or four of you all that are, that are on this, were there. I think you all should, uh, come up with something as a place to start next month. And I don't think this is going to get handled in one month, maybe even several months. Um, and let's give you, and let's give the board of zoning appeals a better set of tools by defining the, uh, that ordinance a little bit better. Now that you have, um, case history, for lack of a better term, on how it's being interpreted locally, let's address that and, um, let's clarify, clean it up. And let's make sure that the ordinance that we have out there is what we really want. Not only what we want, but also what, um, city council wants. And so that we can go forward so that everybody is working off the same page.
Yes, sir.
Thoughts?
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Me too, Kelly.
Well, y'all, you know, you were there. Um, obviously you all didn't have, because it was not an unanimous vote on anything. And, uh, and I think, um, that's not, well, there should have been closer to unanimous vote, I think, um, or, or otherwise it is written incorrectly. And so, uh, your input, uh, would be very helpful on this. What else would you want to say about?
Well, see, part, part, well, part of it, three of the members had, and I'm not knocking anybody or anything else. I'm trying to be honest. But have never been to a planning meeting, do not know what they're talking about in planning or anything else. I think some education would go a long way in that respect. Uh, and, and, you know, when we were talking about setbacks and stuff, that was one of the biggest things was the, uh, the, what is a setback? You know, is it, you know, a build to line? And evidently other people on the same thought that was a build to line. And, uh, but, you know, that kind of like somebody else here a minute ago brought up, well, you know, you've got setbacks all the way around the house. So does that mean you have to stretch your building all the way around to meet those as build to lines? And then the, uh, front orientation on the door, you know, it, part of that, I think, is the, the, the design of the inside. You know, if you've got the front door going, going into a closet, you know, that's not really your main entrance. Now, it was also brought up that, you know, I raised the question, well, how about if the side entrance, which is technically the front entrance as it was built, was walled off? And, you know, I got the, the opinion that you can't do that. And, you know, that would still, you know, make it the front. So I, I, I just really don't know, you know, which way to go on it.
I, I, I had a question. Does BZA, well, like we have, uh, requirements from the state we're continuing at. Does BZA have any requirements for education?
That would have to be asked Sheriff, because I, you know, she brought up at the meeting about our training.
Right.
And I, I do not remember, of course, I don't know if my planning, training went over onto that. But I don't remember getting any.
I'm asking Tim or Sheriff.
They have training requirements, um, by state law.
Okay.
Yes.
Good. And our folks are meeting them.
We're trying to get their training hours from them and put together a similar flow chart as you all see, see in your packet every month on those training hours. Typically, BZA doesn't meet often.
Right.
I mean, I think it's been, uh, over a year since they've met. So we don't see them regularly like we see you all, thankfully. Not both of them, but that means, you know, there's nothing coming up for them to consider. So.
If we can learn what those requirements are and if they're similar to ours or whatever. Also, I mean, can we require anything like require that they attend a, at least a planning commission meeting a year or two a year? Or can we require additional? Is that possible? I don't know that we want to, but just trying to figure out. I mean, you learn a lot and you don't learn it quickly. It's over time and wisdom that develops, et cetera. So, um, anyway.
I think that we can summarize their training requirements for the next meeting. If that would make, I mean, I think that'd be good information and we can talk. I think we probably could require them to do specific things, such as attend a planning commission meeting. But it would be, that would just likely be an ordinance change.
Danielle, do I also remember hearing one time, maybe I heard this wrong, that we are not required to have a separate board of zoning appeals that the process of appeals could be handled by the planning commission?
That is correct. The legislative body can designate the planning commission municipality as the board of zoning appeals. Right now, we have an ordinance that, that creates the board of zoning appeals and sets forth their responsibilities. And so that would have to change in order for the planning commission to serve as the board of zoning appeals.
I think there's plus minuses worth looking at maybe, but there's plus minus.
Yeah, wouldn't we be our own judges? That'd be a little weird. Yeah, we agree. No, we hate what we did. You know, I, I, yeah, I, I mean, that's why they have what, but yeah, that'd be awesome. I affirm what we did was 100%.
So I'm, I'm, uh, city manager Jeff Broughton didn't like that we have, uh, city council people on planning commission that that can get conflicting. Also, whether it's plus minus to have a planning commission on BZA. I mean, I think that, you know, there's, you can argue both sides on several different things for the plus minuses. So, but anyway.
Yeah, I, I can tell you my former life, um, the ZB, we called it ZBA, zoning board of appeals, same thing. Um, yeah, it was totally separate body and, but the city council usually picked people that had been on planning commission for, for a few years. Um, and usually they were people that had been on there for a long time. So, you know, maybe that's something for city council to consider as they start rolling through new appointments and, um, getting people with significant experience in planning, uh, uh, at least in the planning commission. So, anyway.
Scott, I think that would be an excellent idea.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else that we need to, oh, the, the developer is, um, here tonight. Uh, and we originally said he was not going to speak. Do we know if he won't speak at this point in time?
Uh, give, give me one second. I'll ask the question.
While he's doing that, is there anything else anybody wants to discuss on this? Do we know if this be a primary residence or regenerative? Nothing really matter, just curious. I have no clue.
I, I think that, I, I believe, my recollection from the, indicated that it was going to be a primary residence for someone.
Well, it has, it's got to be residential.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry. That was.
You, you meant it would be owned, uh, lived in by the owner, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I think Danielle was, I think I remember seeing that.
I believe that's what he told us, but Tim can correct me if I'm wrong.
I didn't hear the question, but Mr. Chris Ferrand is in the public. I didn't hear the question, but Mr. Chris Ferran is in the public comment box there. If you all wish to ask questions or let him speak.
Chris, if you don't mind, give us your name and address, please, for the record. And if there's, we may have a question or two, if anything you want to say, we're just kind of going.
Okay, yeah, my name is Chris Ferran and currently live at 100 Beaver Street. The 803 project, of course, that's why we're here tonight. Appreciate being able to sit in and sort of see the ins and outs of, you know, how this actually works, you know. And if any questions you guys may have. My thought was that, you know, I was granted all my permits. I thought as an ordinance, you know, with everything that was going on, might have standstill now. So not really sure what to do from here on out.
I understand. Is there anybody on the planning commission that would like to ask Chris a question or two? That's unusual.
I guess, I guess there was the question, what do you, are you planning on using this as a rental or selling it, living in it? That, that was a question that came up just before you came on here.
Well, not really sure what, what I was going to do with it now. I mean, you know, at this point, but before it would have been an investment property. I lived in that East Cedar Street area for about 21 years before CVS. They actually used my address when they built the CVS over there. And of course, that was five, six years ago. And, you know, they were going to do the wider sidewalks and, you know, a lot of other things, which looks like the city's getting around to that now, getting all that taken care of, so.
Oh, it's the state, not the city. The city's been ready. It's the state that's been slow.
Oh, well, as long as it gets done, that's the main, the main for the, for the public. That's the main, main thing.
Are you considering an appeal through the courts of the BZA decision?
Ah, yes, sir, I am. I actually have representation now that's, that we'll be sitting in on some of these meetings and listening to some of these meetings and things. Just from the, you know, from that standpoint, yes, I do intend to appeal this, you know, the BZA's decision.
All right. Anybody else have anything else? We really appreciate you hanging with us tonight and listening to everything else that went on before you.
Though, I mean, I, I really learned a lot just sitting and listening to you guys and, and everything. So it's been very informative, if nothing else, you know, listening to this and, and other, other things you guys have spoken about. My thing was, you know, from public opinion from day one, you know, with this being a modular, I, I didn't see it coming to this, or I would have had representation at the, at the BZA meeting. You know, I thought I had the city on my side. They made the decisions, you know, give me all of the, the rules and regulations I needed. I paid for the permits. Everything was pretty much approved, you know, so I thought I was doing what I was supposed to do. So, you know, since I've lost that support now, you know, of course, I've had to go other direction. But it's public opinion, this thing's a module. You know, and of course, there's not too many questions here. I can understand why. It puts the city in a bad situation. It really does. And they do a great job down here at the planning zone. I'm a contractor in this area. They do a great job and, and Mr. Beavers, his staff, they all do a great job, you know. Just unfortunate that this, you know, is a issue has come up. You know, if it had been a stick-built house or anything other than a module, I don't believe it would have ever come to this. But, you know, we are where we are now.
I understand. All right. Unless somebody has another question, we want to thank you for, for speaking with us and for, for hanging in there. And we'll, we'll wait to hear from staff next month and we'll see where this goes. Joel, you got any other input before we finish this up? Have we lost Joel?
They had me muted. I'm, I'm good, Kelly.
All right. Well, that ends this part of the meeting. Is there anything else that anybody else wants to bring up tonight?
Well, just once again, you have your homework too, as far as training, talking about training, see the sheet. Please keep up with that and make sure that you complete all your required training hours and report those to us. Jason will be getting with you and Danielle or Sheriff and I can get with you on those trainings. There is a mandatory, you might already have it, property training, one hour per year requirement that Danielle typically gives toward December, so. But we'll get you up to speed, Jason, on your requirements there. You might already know them, but we'll get you up to speed on those. And certainly want to welcome Jason to the meeting and your nice relaxing background that you have there at the beach.
Hey, Tim?
Yes.
I, I did inform Jason that first in-person meeting what he's to bring.
Was it the ham biscuits or the donuts?
The ham biscuits.
Can they be the mini biscuits or do they have to be cat head biscuits?
Well, I want some big biscuits.
The mayor has spoken.
So I, thank you, Tim, and I just want to say, appreciate your all's future indulgences. I learned ropes and I learned to wait in there with you all tactfully and approach these issues that come before the planning commission in the right setting, in the right frame of mind. Thank you very much.
Ja- Jason, don't, don't be so nice.
Jason, we'll take it easy on you tonight. We had a short meeting tonight.
With that, Mr. Chairman, the staff has no further items for discussion.
Anybody else make a motion to dismiss? Let's go home. I am home.
Good night. Good night.
Good night, everybody.